I'd like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. We have the approval of the closed session agenda. I'll make the motion that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Due to circumstances arriving since our last school board meeting and since the deadline for agenda planning, I move that the school board pursuant to Policy 140 and in accordance with Robert's Rules waive the agenda setting provisions of Policy 131 and amend the agenda by adding the item as follows. And it would be item number 402 under, that would be under Personnel Matters. Info action regarding censure of Chairman-at-Large Ryan Sawyers. And the recommended action would be a move that the Prince William County School Board approves a resolution censuring Chairman-at-Large Ryan Sawyers for multiple and egregious violations of the Prince William County School Board Code of Ethics.
Okay.
And this would take a majority vote to be added to the agenda.
Actually, to add to the agenda, it takes, to add for discussion, it takes a, it takes a majority vote to add for action, it takes a unanimous vote. Let's see here.
Excuse me, can you repeat that, sir?
Yes. To add for action by policy, it takes a, to add for action, it takes a unanimous vote. To add for discussion, it takes a majority vote.
As I stated, due to circumstances arriving since our last school board meeting and since the deadline for agenda planning, I move the school board pursuant to Policy 140 and in accordance with Robert's Rules waive the agenda setting provisions of Policy 131 and amend the agenda by adding the following, adding the item as follows. So that would take, because we'd be waiving the agenda setting provisions, it would take a majority of votes. And the parliamentary opinion that Mr. Deutsch and I received from Mr. Balch-
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to review. I've had previous parliamentary opinions from Mr. Balch as well that also say that it takes unanimous vote to add something for action. That came up in a previous thing. So anyway, yeah, so I need to type that in somehow. Do you have that in writing?
Yes. Pass it down.
The board needs to stand at ease for a minute while I type all this in. Thank you. I should ask also, is there a second for the motion? Hold on. Ms. Ralston.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Satterwhite, your motion is typed in. And then we have a second by Ms. Ralston. And now we're on discussion. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said, due to things that have come up since the last meeting and since the school board agenda was set, there's some things that I feel that we need to discuss. And I just want to say also that I purposely decided to introduce this for closed session instead of open session. I thought it was more appropriate. And I feel the school board needs to discuss this. And I do have a resolution typed up that I'll be distributing to, assuming this does get added to the agenda, I have a resolution that I'd be distributing to the school board members for discussion in closed session. And of course, any vote would happen here because that's what we're required to do. But I think it speaks for itself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. We obviously have the motion. And then I would just say, obviously, something like this would be nice to have a full board here. But, you know, I get it. And that's, that's the, that's kind of how it works around here, and I get that. So have at it all you want. Like I said, it needs to be unanimous for action. And it certainly can be, it can be added for discussion by a majority vote.
Mr. Chairman, according to Robert's Rules of Order, it does not have to be unanimous to add an item to the agenda. And by voting in favor of adding this to the agenda, as I requested with my statement at the beginning, we would be waiving the agenda provisions under Policy 131 and 140.
Policy supersedes Robert's Rules of Order. I've made my ruling. It takes unanimous vote to be added for action.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Thank you. I move that we make a motion to overrule the decision of the chair.
Again, but because it protects, because everyone has the right to kick something off the agenda, every, every single member of the board is a minority of one, since it has that effect. So you can't waive the right. It would still have to be unanimous. So you can challenge the decision of the chair, but by Robert's Rules of Order, when you're protecting a minority of less than two-thirds, then ultimately, they have, they have to have a negative vote greater than that. So it doesn't change, it doesn't change the ruling at all. But we can, we can certainly do that.
Okay, well, if you saw the parliamentary opinion that came out on two points, it disagrees with you. First is that Policy 141 allows free majority vote to waive the policy setting. And the second is that a majority vote allows the, can pass any motion to overturn the decision of the chair.
And I haven't had a chance to review the email that I saw come through just a few hours ago. But I've also had previous rulings sent from, that the whole board was attached on, sent from the parliamentarian saying just exactly what I'm saying now, precisely what I'm saying now from previous times. So I don't know exactly what, again, I haven't had a chance to review something that just came in a few hours ago. This, this will clearly pass for discussion, and we can move it on to a different time. I'm not, I'm just following the procedure here. And we don't have the right to waive that. There are certain things that you cannot waive by Robert's Rules of Order, even with unanimous vote. Some of those, and one of those things is prior notice, because other board members may have decided to get here quicker had they known something was going to be on here. And so Robert's Rules of Order protects those people from those rights. So that's how it works.
But a motion to overrule the decision of the chair is always a majority vote?
Not when protect, the decision of the chair, you can't work your way around the rule. Ultimately, every board member has a right for prior notice when it comes to an agenda item, period. They have that right. You can't waive that right by Robert's Rules of Order or by policy.
Where in Robert's or in policy does it disagree with that?
This isn't a parliamentarian class. I'm the chairman. I've made my decision as far as what the process goes. That's what it is. It takes unanimous vote to add-
All right, can I make a motion to overrule the decision of the chair? Then a motion to the decision of the chair takes a unanimous vote?
Because of what the chair is deciding takes unanimous vote. You can't just arbitrarily remove the rights of the minority simply because the majority can't do it. There's, Robert's Rules of Order clearly states there are certain things that can't be waived, even with unanimous vote, things that break law, things that violate prior, prior notice, those types of things. You can't do those things. All members have the right to prior notice on agenda items, and that's why the policy, that's why Policy 131 exists.
Well, if it's so clear in Robertson, where is it?
Look it up, Mr. Deutsch. It's there.
I don't have to prove your point. Every, where you look up that a motion to overrule the decision of the chair, it's listed as a majority vote. And you, the parliamentary-
This isn't a motion to overrule the decision of the chair. It's a motion to suspend, it's a motion to suspend the rules. You can't, you can't do that ultimately to add an agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, there was no motion to suspend the rules.
I didn't mean to suspend the rules. I meant to add an agenda item. I apologize. I misspoke. It's a motion to add an agenda item, which Robert's Rules of Order only takes effect when there's no policy. It is the backup to that point. And there are certain rules that you cannot waive. I've taken these courses, I've talked to people. You cannot waive people's right to prior notice. You simply cannot.
If Policy 141 allows for the waiving of the policy-
The decision has been made on this, so ultimately, it's going to take unanimous vote to add for action.
Can we take a moment to have a recess and look it up in Robert's Rules and consult Roberts before we continue this discussion?
We can stand at ease if you'd like. Yes, I can point it out. Ms. Satterwhite, reading directly from, from Policy 131, which, which obviously, policy supersedes Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order only takes effect when there is no policy. Robert's Rules of Order is the catch-all. Says Prince William County School Board members shall be furnished notices of the forthcoming meeting with supporting documents and information as may be needed in considering agenda items. Business conducted by the Prince William County School Board shall be restricted to agenda items. New items of business shall be placed on the agenda for information only by a vote of two-thirds majority, excuse me, I misspoke, I was wrong there, it's not a simple majority, can be added by two-thirds majority, of those members present and voting, and shall be placed on the agenda for action by unanimous consent of those members present at voting, except in the opening and closing of schools, possible violations of law, in any situation posing a clear and present threat to the school, plants, personnel, or students. So that is policy which supersedes Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules is only, is only the fallback for that. So you can't waive the rights of an individual member to block something from action because they have that right.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, point of order, Mr. Chairman, we agree that policy does supersede Robert's. And that's why Policy 140 is important. Page two of the parliamentarian opinion that was sent out, section one, under Policy 140 may the school board add an item to its agenda manner at variance with requirements of Policy 131. And it's fairly extensive, but I'll read a couple of sections. Under Policy 140, however, in special or emergency circumstances where a waiver is in the best interest of the school division, the school board has the ability to waive its written policies. By its terms, Policy 140 does not impose any limit on which of its policies the school board may waive, so the waiver could apply to Policy 131. Dropping down to the end of that section, after a bit of analysis, includes it must therefore be possible for the school board to vote to waive Policy 131 in accordance with Policy 140 without first placing the question of the waiver on the agenda in accordance with Policy 131. Moving down to section three, what vote is required to authorize the waiver? The general rule for school board votes is stated in Policy 136.1. B, quote, "A majority vote of those present in voting constitutes a legal decision," unquote. When a higher vote is required, the policy spells it out. For example, in Policy 131.5, with regard to adding items to an agenda at the same meeting, since Policy 140 does not specify a higher or different vote for the school board to waive one of its policies, the general rule applies and the vote required to waive is a majority of those present in voting, provided a quorum is present.
This is, I mean, all of this is great and grand. This is exactly why prior notice is needed, so things aren't sprung on the board within a few hours of the board meeting, and why every individual board member has the right to restrict something from coming on the agenda last minute. As you could see, when you take the current circumstances out of it, how dangerous it could be to simply say a majority vote can add something at the last minute for a vote. Things could be drastically changed. If you take the emotion out of this, the, the, the policy is clear. On top of that, Policy 140 is about policymaking. It's simply about making policy. No one's, there's no, we're not creating new policy here. Policy 140 refers to policymaking, and this is not a policymaking item. So I can't be more clear. It has to be unanimous. Ultimately, if you think I'm wrong, that there are other, you know, other ways to take care of it.
I understand that this, I understand this has caught you by surprise. I understand that you are probably understandably upset over this.
No, I expect stuff like this every board meeting I come to, actually. Yeah, so I'm perfectly fine with it.
If you want me to get specific about why I'm doing this, I'd be happy to do that. But I'd like to keep the discussion in closed session.
It will be in closed session.
There was, there was something that was sprung on this board by you.
Mm-hmm.
And it was on, let's see, I believe it was September 13th, there was a breach. And because that was after the deadline to get items on the agenda, and because in Robert's it spells out, if there's any kind of disciplined procedure, it needs to be done as close as possible to when the action occurs, I felt like it was important to add this to the agenda tonight. I felt it was important to do this during closed session instead of an open session because I thought it would be more fair to the board and more fair to our public if we kept this business as quiet as we possibly could. Now, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can repeat this during open session, and we can have this discussion again. I didn't have to do this during closed session. I could have made this perfectly public.
Ms. Satterwhite-
But I chose not to do that.
You called for my resignation twice. There's nothing really that I'm concerned about, really, that way, honestly.
And both with good reasons.
Yeah.
Both times with good reason.
Well, we have had it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not calling for your resignation with this, okay?
We need to vote.
I'm asking for censure. And according to the parliamentarian ruling that we had, that Mr. Deutsch and I paid money for, good money out of our own pockets, we have an opinion, a parliamentary opinion.
And I, and I-
This board has sought to have a parliamentary-
I haven't read it yet. And I haven't read that yet, and from what I read about it, I disagree with it. From what has been read to me, we, trust me, the parliamentarian has sent a thing back before. I clarified with him, and he said, "You're right." So we've had this discussion before. I haven't had a chance to read a parliamentary opinion that was sent just a few hours before a board meeting, so I can't sit here and, this is exactly why we have a process, so everyone has time to review things that are going to be before us. It's exactly why our own policies state that any member can block something from being added, not just me, any member can block something from being added for action at the spur of the moment, for very good reason, and it takes two-thirds to add it for discussion by policy.
Mr. Chairman, as I said when I first made my statement, I'm asking for the board to waive the agenda setting provisions of our Policy 131 and 140, to amend the agenda as follows. Now, if you'd like to have a recess, so you can have a few moments to read the parliamentarian opinion, that would be perfectly acceptable. Also, Mr. Chairman, I would also suggest that in light of this, you know, this board has had many discussions about a parliamentarian. We have, we have tried to hire a parliamentarian. But you yourself said, "No, we don't need to do that. We'll have parliamentarian training." We had training by the same gentleman who gave us this opinion. And you were present for that training. Now, we said that, you know, Mr. Deutsch has asked for, for overruling the chair. We also have a decision on that. It also requires a majority opinion, I mean, excuse me, a majority vote. So-
You can't take away the rights of the minority simply by trying to overrule the decision of the chair.
Would you like to show me in Robert's where the rights of minority is in regards to overruling the decision of the chair?
I don't have the book in front of me, ultimately. It's there.
I can read it to you.
We've had it.
I believe it's on page 259 to 60. Even when the appeal is not debatable, the chair can, when stating the question on it, give the reasons for his decision without leaving the chair. It is not amendable. A majority or tie vote sustains the decision of the chair on the principle that the chair's decision stands until reversed by a majority. If the presiding officer is a member of the Assembly, he can vote to create a tie and thus sustain his decision. So it says clearly in Robert's, page 258, this 11th edition, lines 14 to 16, "A majority or a tie vote sustains the decision of the chair on the principle that the chair's decision stands until reversed by a majority."
Again, maybe I'm not as eloquent in saying this as I'm, as I'm trying to be. Simple, simple overruling the decision of the chair is when, for example, I'm going to use an example because it's the best way for me to explain it. If I were to rule your motion not germane to debate, right? If I were to say, you know, "You're making a motion that I don't think is germane to the debate," that would overrule, I think it's incidental motion or something, and pardon me for not having it in front of me. That's, that's where overruling the decision of the chair would be, if I'm saying it's not germane to the debate or something along those lines. Basic rules of parliamentary procedure and our policies don't allow the rights of minority to be blocked. There's Robert's Rules of Order. If you look it up, it's a minority of less than one-third. We've had the same parliamentarian. Let me look it up. Let me look up the email we have. Hold on one second.
Well, point of order, just to explain how overruling the decision of the chair works, it's been regularly used in the past by much larger bodies when the question is of how many votes it takes to make a motion. In 2013, the question before the floor was, of the US Senate, was, "How many votes does it take to confirm a presidential appointee by President Obama?" The standing at that time was that it would take 60 votes to end discussion. And there was a point of order made to overrule the decision of the chair. The majority at that point overruled it and changing the threshold to it only taking 51 votes for certain nominees. This is well within what the overruling decision of the chair has been done, even when at times the minority has been upset by it.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. I found the email. This is from Mr. Balch on 5/10, May 10. He says, "First, my apologies in delay in replying to your email." He was gone. Let me kind of cut to the chase here. "You are quite correct, as stated in Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, 11th edition, page 261, number 2, 14 through 17. No rule protecting a minority of a particular size can be suspended in the face of a negative vote as large as the minority protected by the rule." Meaning, if there's two people protected by the minority, then ultimately, you have to have a negative vote of no more than, of no more than one. So the minority can't, it can't have its rights taken away by that vote. So if it protects two, if that, the vote has to be, the negative vote has to be less than two. If it protects one, which in this case, we all have the right to block that, that thing from being added on the, at the time, if it blocks one, as he said in parliamentary training, a minority of one would mean it has to be a unanimous vote in order for the rules to be suspended, or for, in this particular case, an item to be added. Consequently, he goes on to say, "Consequently, if the rules prove for, quote, 'the right of a single member to block an item for action to be added to the agenda during session,'" end quote, "it would indeed require a unanimous vote to suspend the rules for that purpose." That is in his email to the entire board.
Does that-
Well-
Yes.
Right. Well, Mr. Chairman, you are correct. And I'm looking at that same email as well.
Thank you.
But as you stated earlier, policy supersedes Robert's Rules. And at this point, he's pointing out that Robert's Rules does not allow for this, but our own policies allow for us, by a majority vote, to waive one of our policies. And so our policies trump Robert's Rules in this instance, nullifying this particular section of Robert's and allowing us to waive our policy.
It doesn't nullify it. Robert supports it. Robert supposes the right of, it supports the right of the policy. The policy says, our policy gives the minority of one the right, for example, Ms., let me finish. The policy gives the minority of one the right to block anything. So Robert's Rule says, if by policy you're giving someone the minority right to block something, that person has to give up their rights. We specifically had this conversation with him. I'm very, very, very comfortable with my ruling that this takes unanimous vote. Very comfortable.
There is, there is no minority of one ruling in Policy 131 of a member to block something.
It, it says it by, it says if you have to ultimately do it, then it, then it does it. It says it has to be unanimous vote, which makes everyone a minority of one. He specifically used the phrase minority of one in our board training. He used that phrase specifically. That is, that is his phrase. He said minority of one. He said it in that room, right back there. I'm absolutely 100% confident in this ruling.
I just find this fascinating because we each have the rights of one vote on this board. If one member could block a vote at any time, we would never pass anything.
No, no, no. It's to add to the agenda. It's specifically to add to the agenda.
That's, that's to add to the agenda outside-
No.
Outside of when the agenda's being approved.
No.
That's my understanding, and that's what-
Not my understanding at all. Again, guys-
But our, our own policy, Policy 140, it waives that provision.
I disagree. My ruling is it takes unanimous vote. No one's changing any minds here, it doesn't look like. So it's, it's time to vote.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to ask you to remove yourself from the chair and appoint someone else temporary chair so that we can get this through? Because obviously, because this involves you, that-
It doesn't involve, this is the same thing that we've done. I'm ruling this either way. Let's, let's just vote. That's all we need to do. That's all we need to do. You guys can do what you want, make as many, and you know what? As a matter of fact, just do it. I don't even care. Let's just take the vote. You're gonna, you're gonna do what you want, you're gonna have what you want anyway. It really doesn't matter. It's not going to do anything to me. So if you want to have it, let's do it. I'm going on the record as far as saying you can't. Ultimately, one person has the right to do it. But if you guys want to have a blast, and we have an evaluation to do, that we have, we have important things to do in closed session. We've got, we've got very important things about students to do. The motions that you guys bring forward all year are about me, and that's, if that's what takes up your time and energy, that's fine. So let's have at it. You guys want to have at it? You guys want to censure me? Send me a, send me a certified copy. I'll hang it on my wall with pride with, next to the recall petition.
All right. So are you changing, are you changing your ruling on it?
Yeah, sure. Why not? Let's have at it. You good? Everybody? Ready to vote?
So just to be clear, the motion on the table is Ms. Satterwhite's motion?
Yes, it's an amendment to, to the main motion. Sorry, this is my first time doing online voting. So I click right there?
Yes, sir. And you will record your vote manually, like you used to.
Okay.
And you'll watch the votes come in as people lock them in. There you go.
So everyone has voted now?
Yes, and you can get closed online voting. And then you still have all the old controls, so if you, somebody said-
The vote is four yes, two no, Wilk and Sawyers. One absent, Jesse. One not present at vote, Williams. Motion passed.
Okay. I need to add, yeah, it's, welcome. Let me add to the roll call here. I've got to add in-
That's a little strange that we put everybody back in. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm worried that I'm going to lose this. Who knows? So we're back to the main motion. Ms. Williams, if you don't mind, right now, we can just finish this main motion and then go from there, if that's okay with you. So we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion? The, just the agenda?
The closed session agenda.
Yeah. Anymore? The vote has been open. Close it again, sorry.
The vote is four yes, two no. The vote is four yes, two no. Wilk and Sawyers. One absent, Jesse. One not present at vote, Williams. Motion passed.
Before we move on to this next thing, do you want to log in? Are you good just there? Not present at vote?
Sure. What we're doing.
Well, I just need, I can add you in right now, or I can do it later. That's all I'm asking, before I move on to the next thing. It was an open motion last time, so I didn't know how to add you.
Wow.
All right. We're moving on to motion, motion to enter closed session? I don't blame you. Motion to enter closed session. I'll make the motion. No, this is to go into closed session. That was just the agenda. That pursuant, I'll read this one. "That pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, that the Prince William County School Board entered closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and take action on the appointments and releases of specific employees under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 7. Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2 and 7. And three, to evaluate the performance of division counsel and consider a related amendment to her contract of employment." to her contract of employment under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and 1." Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Deutsch.
I move to amend it to add Section 4 personnel under Virginia Code 2.2-3711.
I need it in writing, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Deutsch, amendment. Four personnel matters under Virginia Code 2.2-3711. Second? Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Satterwhite, discussion?
The vote is four yes, two no, Wilk and Sawyers. One absent, Jessie. One not present at vote. Williams, motion passed.
And back to the main motion. Any more discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Did everybody else have four added to their section for voting? Because I don't see it online, or did I need to refresh?
It was just added as an amendment. It passed. Now we're just on the main motion, so it'll pass...
Okay, so it'll be added to the main motion?
It's added to the main motion as an amendment. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The vote is four yes, two no, Wilk and Sawyers. One absent, Jessie. One not present at vote. Williams, motion passed.
The Prince William... My mic on. The Prince William County School Board now entered into closed session. We will schedule to return at 7:00. Is the board... If I ask the board, is it... Since obviously, we have very limited time to do this, is it possible to go into closed session again at the end of the regular meeting and still start our meeting at 7:00? Is that possible? Can we do that, or no? In order to not start the public meeting, obviously incredibly late at this point. So we just go in and do the basic materials and then come back and do the regular meeting at 7:00? Is that... Then we have to go back into closed session again? Is that possible?
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. You have to have a... You have to have another motion.
Another motion?
Yes.
But we can do it, right? In other words, okay. All right. The Prince William County School Board is now in closed session. We'll return at 7:00. The Prince William County School Board is returning from closed session to open session. We're on item 7.01, which is approval of the closed-session consent agenda. A motion is in order. I'll make the motion, since Ms. Jessie's not here. "That the Prince William County School Board approved the closed-session consent agenda as recommended." Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston.
My second.
Thank you. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion... I'm sorry. I'm used to saying that. The... Excuse me.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Jessie. Motion passed.
And closed-session certification. "That pursuant..." I'll make the motion. "That pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of September 20, 2017, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board." Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I'd like a second.
Thank you. Discussion?
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Jessie. Motion passed.
All right. There'll be a very, very brief pause, and before we start the public meeting. I'd like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting, the public meeting, to order for September 20, 2017. Lot of green shirts in here today. Lot of green shirts. Before we get a little break of protocol today at the request of Mr. Brand of the Brentsville District, we're going to have a presentation from the Advanced Women's Ensemble of Gainesville, who provide two musical selections, like again, at the request of Mr. Brand from the Brentsville District. Mr. Brand, if you have anything to say, or would like to do any further introductions, please feel free.
You do? Okay. All right. Okay, I'll defer to you guys.
Good evening. Our first selection is a South African peace song titled Ukutula. It is selected in recognition of the United Nations Declaration of September 21st as an international day of peace. Music unites us all where words cannot. In an international peace effort, we speak this text to you. Peace, redemption, praise, faith, victory, and comfort. Solo sung by Holly Akartik, Tessa Ross, and Danielle Bailey, here is Ukutula. Ukutula. Alleluia igasilika Jesu li nyenyes. Ukubonga kulomlaba wesono. Alleluia igasilika Jesu li nyenyes. Ukumoba kulomlaba wesono. Alleluia igasilika Jesu li nyenyes. Ukutula kulomlaba wesono. Alleluia igasilika Jesu li nyenyes. Before we sing our final selection, we would like to say thank you on behalf of our choral director, Mrs. Glom, and our principal, Ms. Porter-Lucas, for inviting us to sing this evening. Our final selection is from the hit musical, Grease. Here is the Gainesville Middle School Advanced Women's Ensemble singing "We Go Together."
Well, perfect time. Since you girls are already standing, we're going to stand up and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. The invocation for September 20, 2017, will be led by Pastor Stan Rhoda of the New Life Christian Church in Gainesville-Bristow, at the request of Mr. Brand from the Brentsville District.
All right, let's pray together, please. Our Father in Heaven, you're a good God to us. Even when we are unfaithful, you're faithful to us. God, we ask that your presence be felt in this place tonight. God, conversations are going to be had and decisions made that are going to impact the lives of people and children in this county. And so, God, we pray that you will guide those decisions. For those making the decisions, God, we ask for your wisdom. And, God, we're grateful for each child created in your image, that this body has the privilege of leading and teaching and caring for, as was even evidenced for us just a moment ago. God, help us to see them in our minds as decisions are made. And, God, we're grateful to you again for your faithfulness and your goodness. It's in the name of your Son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I will make the motion that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to second.
Thank you. Oop, I put it wrong here, I'm sorry. My name first. Ms. Williams, discussion? Those in... Oh, sorry. Those in favor?
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Jessie. Motion passed.
Motion that the Prince William County School Board approv... Nope. I'm sorry, I had it right. The motion that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Discussion on the consent agenda? Ms. Williams?
I'd just like to make a little mention to National Italian-American Heritage Month. It's always special to me when I sit up here, because that's when I found out I could have been related to our former chairman, which was always a topic of humor up here, all the way to people from Virginia. But in addition to that, I always like to, when I can, pay attention to our custodial services and our bus drivers. Those are people who often don't get talked about a lot, but play a very integral role in our lives, in our lives as parents, I'm speaking, and also for our students. And the work that they do is exceptional and not talked about as much as it should be. So I just wanted to make special note of that and express my appreciation.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? No? Mr. Brand, sorry.
Ms. Williams, actually, I want to thank you for bringing it up, the Custodial Services Employee Appreciation Week. I think that's also important to note. And it just kind of reminds me, when I go back to my teaching days at Woodbridge Senior High School, one of my favorite people that I worked with there was a woman named Etta, who came into my classroom every single day to clean the room up, to dump the trash. But every single day, we would have this wonderful conversation as I was there, working after school, you know, during those two or three hours of grading that I would do before I left school, in addition to the two or three hours of grading that I would do when I got home from school. But Etta was a joy to work with, and I loved talking to her. And she actually used to ask me all the time about my newborn daughter, who was just standing up here a second ago, as a much bigger 13-year-old. So definitely, those are people that deserve our appreciation. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, go ahead. It's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry I missed one at the bottom of our list here, which was Virginia Disability History and Awareness Month. As, you know, I'm a firm believer in disabilities are abilities that are just special. So I just wanted to make note of that as well. Just want to keep it short. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, since we're all talking now, I just happened to notice that Italian and Polish are both on there. And since I happen to be both, you know, why not mention... I know I look super Italian.
...actions at the October 18th, November 19th, and December 13th school board meetings. Thank you very much.
Questions, Ms. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. First and foremost, thank you, Mr. Bixby and Mr. Brewer. I have nothing to say except welcome to your first school board meeting as principal of Fred Lynn. I'm just going to continue on my excitement about Fred Lynn from Mr. Nevis carrying right on into your tenure, sir. I'm very excited. Thank you for the presentation this evening. I know that you recently went to Richmond to speak to the state superintendent about Fred Lynn. I was just wondering while you were here if you had anything you'd like to share from that experience with us.
Sure, it was exciting. It was a great opportunity to represent our school division and Fred Lynn to speak about school improvement and best practices and being able to help the state of Virginia look at those practices, closing the achievement gap, and specifically looking at how we engage our parents, our LUNAs, and our special education students as well. And they were particularly interested in the work that we've done here in Prince William over the years.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a second because I'm sure you're not going to stay for a whole meeting and nor do I expect you to. But I just wanted to congratulate you on successful back-to-school nights. I think this might actually be the calmest I've ever seen you. This is the first year that I have not put on heels to go to back-to-school nights because both of my middle school principals had me running around and sneakers were the better choice. So again, welcome. I'm absolutely a fan of all the things that you've done so far and the feedback from the community in your short term so far has been absolutely spectacular and fabulous. So welcome again. I look forward to many, many good reports. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the support, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ralston?
Congratulations on being at Fred Lynn. I was really surprised when I saw you down in Richmond at the elementary school principals. Was that Richmond? We were at the elementary school principals' meeting? And the energy that you have is just outstanding. If you do half of that, then I know you'll be successful. I look forward to watching you even though you're not in my school division, district. I look forward to you and wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
Ms. Ralston, you can join us on September 30th for some ground beautification if you'd like to come hang out. We're going to be beautifying the grounds of Fred Lynn and up close and personal.
I get the plant a flower?
Sure, I'll be out there in the mud, too.
Okay.
You guys good now? Okay, just letting you go as long as you need. Ms. Satterway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brewer, I've been following your progress as you posted on Twitter about your students, and you are an inspiration, and your students are an inspiration to see the activities that they're involved in, to see the engagement with you, the students, the community. I'm very excited about what's going on at Fred Lynn, and I wish you all the best. I can't wait to hear the continued reports. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again, Mr. Bixby and Mr. Brewer, for all of your work on this front. I just have, and maybe you all have already told us the answers, but just two weird nerdy technical questions. What's the, I looked through the accreditation statuses that we just received. It said TBD for Fred Lynn. I guess, can we just get an update on, I guess, what's the current accreditation and what's the timeline to where we're going to get?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Deutsch. The status is to be determined because we've appealed the school's accreditation stand, uh, status based upon options that were made available by the state in June. The state received several appeals from throughout, many schools appealed, and we're actually going to participate in a conference call tomorrow at 4:00 to receive some guidance. Our understanding is that the state board will review the appeals later this month, and we're looking to hear a decision on our appeal in October. If our appeal was granted, the school would receive, reconstitute its status, and we would no longer be presenting monthly updates to you. Our appeal is based upon the idea under the criteria that the status of the school is reconstituted under the appointment of a new principal who has demonstrated and been recognized both nationally and at the state for bringing about high levels of achievement at Title I schools. So that, in a nutshell, is our appeal.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams?
Just for the public clarification, because I'm sure somebody will ask, because it just ran across my brain. Have they given any mention? Because I know that we don't technically have any Title I middle schools in the state of Virginia, and I know that you said for our, Mr. Brewer, is a type. So we do now? Because I was, I was confused. So I'm sure if I am, there's other people out there are. So maybe you could just give us a little blurb, remind us Fred Lynn Title I status, how that works?
Well, Title I status is determined on the number of youngsters who are eligible for free and reduced meals, and we currently have three middle schools in Prince William that are Title I. We have Hampton, we have Fred Lynn, and this year we have Stonewall Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Bixby.
You need to go again? No, you're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers.
You're welcome. All right. We are on to item 1502, which is the K-8 best practices, the Noakesville School. And we have a new face. First time to the podium, is that correct? Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening.
We have nothing to officially embarrass you, although I joke with you all the time. So the microphone is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, Dr. Waltz. In keeping with our practice of showcasing best practices in our schools, I'm honored to present to you the staff and some students from our premier K-8 school, the Noakesville School, under the leadership of Principal Eric Worcester. Mr. Worcester and his staff will be sharing a presentation on vertical alignment titled "Aligning for Success: Bridging the Gaps from Elementary to High School." So at this time, I welcome Mr. Worcester and his amazing team of educators and students.
Thank you, Mrs. Heebner. Y'all can have a seat. I didn't stand this whole time. Man, I'm glad we're not having to sing because Gaines was awesome. So they did a great job. Or do Excel because that student was fantastic. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of our Prince William County School Board, and Dr. Waltz. Thank you for having us here today. I'm Eric Worcester, principal of the Noakesville School, and I have a great team with me. This is my wonderful AP, Jeff Brunson, my outstanding sixth-grade math teacher, Mrs. Krausey. We have the pleasure of having some of our fantastic students here with us. We have Gavin Pierce, currently a ninth-grade student at Brentsville, Barrett Butler, currently eighth grader at the Noakesville School, and Leonardo Gonzalez, currently a sixth-grade student at the Noakesville School. I want to thank Mr. Brand for inviting us to come talk to the school board about one of the many great initiatives going on at the Noakesville School. I appreciate all that you've done for our school and our community. Thank you as well to the school board for all that you do to support the students of Prince William County. Working together, we can accomplish anything. The Noakesville School with students from K through 8 is unique in Prince William County. Our success would not be possible without the leadership and support of many, most of whom are in this room. So I want to personally thank Mr. Trenum, Mr. Brand, Dr. Waltz, Mrs. Heebner, Mrs. Hart, Mr. Bixby, for all that they have done to support me and the Noakesville School community. Your vision and leadership have made our success possible. I truly appreciate all that you've done for us and continue to do. Finally, I want to recognize my awesome staff, my great admin team, Jeff Brunson and Laura Gazta, outstanding students, and our supportive community. They are the reason that we are world-class. And now, on to our topic. For our best practices showcase, we are discussing very briefly our vertical alignment systems at the Noakesville School. Mrs. Krausey and I had the privilege of presenting a more thorough version of this presentation at the National Principals Conference last summer in Philadelphia. I also had the chance to present this locally at the Triple E Conference with our sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Sack. I think that aligning practices truly help to bridge the gaps from elementary to high school and paves the way for ongoing success. When you have staff collaborate across grade levels, it helps lead to greater results in student achievement. We are still very much a work in progress, but we have already had many positive results from our alignment discussions. Just as one example, I'm very proud the Noakesville School had both the highest pass and highest pass advanced rate for sixth-grade math in Prince William County. To discuss more about our definition of alignment and some staff practices, here is our sixth-grade math teacher, Mrs. Krausey.
Thank you, Mr. Worcester. My students and I could not have done it without your support, their parent support, and the support of all of my colleagues. In order to showcase our best practices, we must first define vertical alignment. You may be familiar with horizontal alignment, which is the consistent practices and procedures among the single grade level. Our grade levels do a great job of this at the Noakesville School, which helps support our vertical alignment. Vertical alignment is a set of consistent shared practices that support student success and growth throughout each and every grade level, K through 8. We support and foster this alignment through different programs and practices at the Noakesville School. We have a vertical alignment committee that consists of a coordinator for each core subject area, social studies, science, language arts, and math, which I have served on. Together, our committee conducts classroom observations, professional developments, and has supplied professional resources, just to name a few. Some of the resources included are content vocabulary alignment so that students are using the same words and vocabulary through their, throughout their academics. We have also focused on consistent writing structures, editing marks, problem-solving, and scientific methods along with real-world applications. We also support many student collaborations through vertical alignment, which our assistant principal, Jeff Brunson, is now going to tell you about.
Thank you, Mrs. Krausey. I want to echo what Mr. Worcester said earlier in that we have great students, staff, and community, and together as a team, we truly are world-class. On this slide, we have some photos exhibiting some world-class collaboration. We're very fortunate to not only have K to 8 discussions, but we also have K to 12 collaborative opportunities with Brentsville District High School. The photo on the left is from the High School Reading Buddies, where high school students come to the Noakesville School to help provide some reading support to our students. And then the next two pictures show the Noakesville School's annual celebration of seniors from BDHS. Our students line the hallways throughout our beautiful building and cheering and celebrating the seniors during their shining moment. You can often hear the younger students say, "I can't wait to come back to do that." It's an inspiring event that both schools look forward to every year. The partnership isn't just between the students, it's also between the staff. Our middle school departments have met with the high school departments, our eighth-grade teachers have met with our ninth grade, the ninth-grade staff, and our admin teams and our counseling departments are in constant communication. Now to discuss a specific student alignment program, I turn it over to our senior principal, Mr. Worcester.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Besides supporting aligning practices for our staff, we also provide, click, we also provide opportunities for our elementary and middle school students to experience life at the next school level. We call these programs Middle Schooler and High Schooler for a Day. For this program, our fifth and eighth-grade students get to experience an authentic day in the life of either a sixth-grade student or ninth-grade student. They receive a mentor in that next grade level to help guide them through a realistic day and help prepare them for the transition ahead. If their mentor has PE, they go to PE. When they have lunch, they go to lunch. When they have a quiz, well, maybe they don't take the quiz, but maybe they do, just to see what kind of work is expected at that next level. We collect survey data to gauge the effectiveness and have found it to be beneficial to our students, the staff at our schools, and our community. Students on both ends report many benefits, a few of which you can see on this slide. There's a lot of writing up there. I'm not going to read all that to you. Because most importantly, I now, how are you feeling? Ready? Good? All right, great. Now, I want to have our students share a few things that they enjoyed about Middle Schooler or High Schooler for a Day. First up, we have our former student, current ninth-grader, Gavin. Gavin, come on up.
Good afternoon. So I will be talking about how High Schooler for a Day changed how I thought high school was going to be. First of all, sports and other activities over at Brentsville have really helped students have relationships with other students, have friendships with other students. It's very important, especially when you're having anxiety and fears about high school. You get to have more friends when you go into high school. For Middle Schooler for a Day, your mentor, they can also be your friend. They could help you out with whatever you need at that current time. Now, for some sports, your friends might be doing that sport. Your friends might be doing baseball in the spring, and they might be doing football in the fall. For me, I was the only eighth grader that did lacrosse in the spring. I was frightened, yet excited at the same time because I was really excited about that one sport. Now, everybody was, first of all, they were not, usually they push around the eighth graders since they're the younger group. They are the older kids, so, but since I was the only eighth grader, they kind of let me in the crowd. They kind of just let it loose. But it has been a great experience for High Schooler for a Day and also the programs for Noakesville. And I'm glad that I had the opportunity to speak here and to go to Brentsville and to go to the Noakesville School. Thank you.
Next up, we have an eighth-grade student, Barrett. Come on up, Barrett.
Hi, good evening. I, when I was a sixth grader, I remember being, I was a fifth grader, and I remember waking up the morning of Sixth Grader for a Day, and I remember thinking, "It's going to be so scary. It's a new school. I'm so nervous." And I got there, and I met my mentor. She was the nicest person I've ever met. And she led me to her first class, which was tech ed, and they were using the SAWs. And my teacher, Mr. Greer, he's now my teacher, he taught me how to use it, and I made a little, like, round ball thing that I still have in my bedroom. And I just remember, it was, it was an eye-opening experience because I remember being a fifth grader and being nervous about going to middle school and not really knowing what I was entering. And the differences between elementary school and middle school are really big. It's, you're in a class with 26 other kids and a teacher, and then you go to 70 teachers and 100 kids. But at Noakesville, it's just, it's just the right size where everyone knows everyone, and you can, everyone knows everyone. So you have friends in every class, and you can talk about everything. So it's just, it's really great. And the Noakesville School, it becomes like a family environment. I'm an eighth grader now, so I know everyone. My little sister's in sixth grade, and I have friends in seventh grade. So it's basically just a giant family where we're all there for each other, and it's very safe. Thank you.
Last up, we have Leo. You go, Leo.
Good evening. Good evening. Yeah, okay. Good evening. Thank you for coming. So one thing I liked about Middle Schooler for a Day was social studies because Mr. Sack made learning fun for everyone, and everyone got to learn a lot of stuff because he was a great teacher. Second was language arts with Mrs. Pixley because we did a writing prompt about asking a question, what was inside the box, and we got to use our imaginations, and that was pretty fun. And last thing was PE with Mr. Rick Clarity because he gave us information that things we should eat and not eat, and he was talking about keeping us healthy, and that I found interesting. And one thing I liked about Noakesville is the teachers we have and everything we need to learn. So I thank Mr. Worcester for giving us a chance so we can learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin Barrett. Leo, great job. I want to stress that, just like our school of vertical alignment practices, none of this is possible without ongoing collaboration. It takes a lot of time planning and collaborating between schools, and involves discussion between administration, teaching staff, and office staff to make it work. It also heavily involves the school counseling teams. I want to thank my school counselors, Mrs. Piet and Mrs. Kaz Marsick, for all of their work to help the students at Noakesville. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Nate Shaver, our former counselor, as she was instrumental in getting this program started. Finally, I want to thank Mrs. Meintz, the principal at Brentsville, for her support in making High Schooler for a Day so successful. She has been a fantastic ongoing partner in education and has been my privilege to work with her as a colleague. I value her knowledge and her expertise. Thank you again for your time and allowing us to continue to serve the Noakesville community.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board? Mr. Brand, since it's yours, we'll start with you.
First of all, thank you all for coming tonight and giving a presentation, Mr. Worcester, and the rest of your team and students. I did take down some notes and wanted to kind of point out some things to you. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Brunson. Mr. Brunson and I were talking, I think it was in June after the joint CIP meeting at the Noakesville School, and we were just kind of talking about a variety of topics, and you mentioned an upcoming presentation, and we kind of got the ball rolling. And to be honest, in my year on the board here, I've been a little jealous of Mr. Wilk. He's had a lot of best practices presentations, and I did want to emulate some of the good things he's done. So I thank you for coming tonight and telling us about the great things you guys are doing at the Noakesville School. I want to thank the students for coming. I know we started a little bit late tonight, so I thank you for hanging in there. Is it Leo? Leo, I'm assuming that's your mom who had the camera back there that was recording? So she's one of my favorite people of the night because she was so proud to be recording you back there. Some other thing, that big bulleted list, you know, when I was looking at it, the different things, the benefits of a middle school or high school for a day, and, you know, it definitely seems like it's a benefit when you have some schools that are close together in terms of distance, where you can work on this collaboration and you can do things together. And I think that's definitely a benefit of your schools and definitely some other schools in the county, I guess, like T. Claywood and Patriot, and some other ones in the Brentsville District, for example, where you can work together at different grade levels. And if you have a good working relationship with the principal of the other school, which of course, many of us, many of you guys do, it's definitely a benefit. That bullet that really sticks out to me, the reducing anxiety fears about middle school, high school, that just seems huge to me. As a father of a 13-year-old and eighth grader who will be starting high school next year, and I know Ms. Williams already has a high school, or she probably can talk more about this, but definitely, I would assume there is lots of fear and anxiety about what those next steps happen to be. So I, that's a bullet that definitely sticks out to me. I know you also have some special challenges being a K through 8 school, you know, when it comes to budget and other things like that. So, you know, I appreciate definitely what you guys are doing. Thank you for coming tonight, and keep doing the great things you're doing in the Noakesville community.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the students for sharing from your perspective, your experience. I always love to hear student comments, and I also recognize that it takes a lot to come up here and speak before all of us adults staring at you, waiting on your every, hanging on your every word. So you guys did a wonderful job, and I really, really appreciate it. So thank you very much. Of course, to the staff, too. I'm just a little biased with the kids.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? Thank you all very much. Thank you. All right, we are moving right along to the proposed sale of VPSA bonds, fall 2017 sale. Mr. Klein. Do we have, is there anything? You're good? We're just good for the motion? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I move that the Prince William County School Board authorize the completion and submission of the application to the Virginia Public School Authority for the fall 2017 standalone bond sale in the amount of, what is that? $1,265,000?
No, 126 million.
126?
Sorry.
Yeah, not good numbers this evening. 126,000?
Nope. 126 million.
New? Million? I was, yeah, okay, see, you can't read English, I can't read numbers.
It's small on there. I'll give you that.
Maybe we just shouldn't stop reading now, this thing.
It is small print. I will give you that. Why don't we just start from the beginning?
Okay. I move that the Prince William County School Board A, authorize the completion and submission of the application to the Virginia Public School Authority for the fall 2017 standalone bond sale in the amount of $126,540,000 to finance, did I say it right?
Nope. 540,000.
20,000, yeah, I should just stop. To finance certain capital improvement projects for school purposes, including Lakewood Middle School addition, 13 rooms, new alternative education school, Patty Elementary School, Antietam Elementary School, Lakewood Elementary School, Springwood Elementary School, Elementary School East, Prince William Parkway, Leesylvania Elementary School, Leesylvania Elementary School, Minnieville Elementary School, Stonewall Middle School, Western Bus Facility, Marshall Elementary School renewal, Montclair Elementary School renewal, 13th High School West. B authorize the superintendent or such other officer as he may designate to submit such documentation as required by VSP, VPSA. C request the board of county supervisors authorize the completion for fall 2017 VPSA standalone bond sale and to take such other action as may be necessary to complete the bond sale. And D direct that the resolution shall become effective immediately.
Ms. Williams, your mic wasn't on. Could you repeat that?
Yes. I moved that the board...
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ralston.
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Discussion, not for Ms. Williams, please. No, I'm teasing. Discussion? Mr. Deutsch?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Klein, if that's okay?
We, he actually prefers it. He loves, he loves the questions. He actually prefers it. He loves, he loves the questions. Mr. Klein.
How you doing?
Just fine, sir.
Awesome.
What can I help you?
So just curious on this bond poll, are we expecting any kind of overage in terms of pulling more than what we need, or how precise are these numbers in terms of what the costs are going to be?
These would reflect what we see as the current projected cost for each of the addition, each of the projects that are listed. Certainly, they become subject to change based on when we actually go out to bid and the results of that bid.
And are these, so when we've got the prices for different additions and whatnot, are these the full cost of these, or are we pulling bonds in phases for some of these additions?
In a number of these projects, probably the easiest one to look at is the 13th High School is on there for $8 million. It is phased depending upon the size of the project and the timing of the project. Many of the renovations, for example, go over two years. Something like the high school will go over four years.
And then the Western Bus Facility, is that for building or for land purchase?
That is for the construction.
Okay. And I'm assuming the Eastern Elementary School Parkway, that's the purchase amount?
That is the construction. We have already purchased the site last fall. This is for the construction of the building, which would be opening in two years.
Is that the full construction amount?
That was the, that would be the main construction amount for award to the prime contractor. Let me find my-- Yes, for the 27,685.
And then what's the $3 million we're pulling for the new alternative ed school?
That is the, part of the phasing of the alternative school and the construction of that. So we've already begun the construction. This is a partial payment towards the construction of that site. So we're still selling bonds associated with that facility.
Is that our last poll for that, or are we, it seems like a small--
I think we, I'll have to check and get back if that's all right. But the sequence of sales from last year, this year, would encompass the total cost of that building, and that was, my recollection was something about $35 million in total.
Anyone else? Okay, the motion, I'm not going to read every single word of that if you guys don't mind, but I will repeat the motion because that is my job. The Prince William County School Board authorize the completion and submission of the application to the Virginia, to the Virginia Public School Authority for Fall 2017 standalone bond sale in the amount of $126,540,000 to finance certain capital improvement projects for the school purposes, including the list of schools in there. And it's everyone on everyone's screen, you can see it. And B, authorize the superintendent or such other officer as he may designate to submit such documentation as required by the VPSA. Request for the Board of County Supervisors to authorize the completion for the Fall 2017 VPSA standalone bond sale, to take such other action as may be necessary to complete the bond sale, and D, direct that this resolution shall become effective immediately. Online voting is open.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Jesse, motion passed.
And moving right along to superintendent's time. Dr. Walz.
Thank you. I'm pleased to share some very good news from the Virginia Department of Education. It's that 94% of our schools are fully accredited this year compared with 86% statewide. This is particularly noteworthy since five of our schools that were partially accredited last year now have full accreditation. Special efforts from teachers and staff helped students increase subject matter proficiency and clearly bore fruit on the standards of learning tests. At Belmont Elementary, for example, SOL science pass rates rose by 34 points last year. Congratulations to students and staff there and across the county because all schools can be proud of gains in some areas. It's great to go from 90% of schools fully accredited last year to 94% now, but we are striving for 100%. We will continue to give students special assistance where they need it, and will work with the Department of Ed and others to help every school and every student to succeed. Please check pwcs.edu for more info on our performance and our commitment to continuous improvement. There's also good news about student performance on the ACT tests in Prince William. Prince William County School students' composite scores and results in all areas are the highest in five years. We have two college fairs coming up. One, September 25th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Osborne Park High School. The second is October 12th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Freedom High School. So that's in Manassas for Osborne and Osborne Park and Woodbridge for Freedom. All juniors and seniors and their parents can explore post-graduation options and meet representatives from colleges and universities, technical schools, and the military. Our continuing efforts to provide new options for the future include some fantastic programs in career and technical education. Following the board's requests to highlight CTE options, we're now helping families to better understand the sometimes confusing question around transport versus transfer programs. So here's a brief video that will be online and used in upcoming school presentations as part of our commitment to CTE awareness.
Career and Technical Education offers an amazing array of career paths. But while deciding on which program to take, you'll have to think about two other roads to follow, transfer or transport. If you're accepted into a transfer program, you become a full-time student of your new host school. A network of express bus stops will get you there. As a full-time student at your new school, you'll get to participate in sports, clubs, and any other extracurricular activities offered. If you're accepted into a transport CTE program, you remain a student at your current base school. You'll then be transported by bus to the host school to attend the specific CTE program classes. When the classes are over, it's back to your base school for dismissal and any extracurricular activities that you choose to participate in. Two different paths to follow, but great programs at the end of each. Pick the path that works for you and start your journey to success by CTE.
All right. And here's an important health and safety reminder. Every school requires proper documentation and authorization for all medications, treatments, and student medical procedures. Authorization forms are on pwcs.edu and located in every school's health office. Contact school nurses with any questions. Between September 15th and October 15th, National Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes significant Hispanic-American contributions to our nation's history. Check out the Northern Virginia Community College's Global Learning Center website for news of special events. Now for some student news. Congratulations to our 2017 National Merit semifinalists. Tristan Baird, Abigail Morgan, and Lisa Mosuro from Battlefield, Haley Page from Brentsville District High School, Grace Yaboah-Cody, Colgan High School, Daniel Dearberry, Forest Park, Lauren Osborne, and Kenneth Petscavage, Osborne Park, Matthew Trang, Patriot High School, and Natalie Homneum, Thomas Jefferson School for Science and Technology. Also, congratulations to 2003 Forest Park High School graduate Jennifer Paris. She just won a 2017 Emmy Award as field producer for the outstanding informational series Leah Rimini, Scientology and the Aftermath. And kudos to current Forest Park High School's freshman Eleanor Seacrest. We had Eleanor here last year. She was just featured this past week on NBC's Today Show for the amazing work that earned her a top National Science Fair victory and $25,000. The award came when she was at Benton Middle School last year. And finally, speaking of years, on behalf of the school division, a happy new year to those celebrating both the Jewish and the Muslim New Years. Best wishes to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. And we are moving on to the revision of policy 403.09, Student Safety Equipment and Training. A motion is in order, and I'll go ahead and take this one, Ms. Williams, that the Prince William County School Board-- I know, I take the easy ones-- --that the Prince William County School Board approved the revision of policy 403.09, Student Safety Equipment and Training.
And I'll second that motion.
Mr. Deutsch seconds discussion on this. And online voting is open.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Jesse, motion passed.
1802, a motion is in order. I'll take it. The Prince William County School Board approved the revision of policy 261, School Calendar, and policy 261.01, Make Up Time.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Deutsch, second. Thank you. Discussion. Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Jesse, motion passed.
And we're on to revision of policy 737, Searches and Seizures. This is a first reading. Mr. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Walz, the item before you tonight is the proposed revision for policy 737, which is searches and seizures. This particular policy provides an update to the board policy, again, regarding searches and seizures. Updates in conjunction with that, it provides the associated regulation that provides guidance to staff relative to those processes and procedures.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions on the documentation in front of the board? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Klein? Thank you very much, sir. And we're on to Board Matters. We'll start on my right. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last couple of weeks have been a lot of fun as we have been going to a bunch of back-to-school nights, have gone to a number at Colgan, OP, Benton, Saunders. And just seeing the excitement of all the parents and students getting ready for classes and seeing their new buildings. I always enjoy going and just dropping and sitting in the back of different classes and watching and seeing everybody's going to be learning. It's a fun and exciting time. And then last Friday, got to go to one of the rivalry football games with OP and Colgan, and some of us in the room had a lot of fun there. But, and it was, it was spirited, and it was definitely a rivalry game. And so, good, brandy rivals, but people that knew each other. So, yep, but--
He's calling it a rival.
There was-- What? Anyway, so fun, fun time had by all, and the spirit was appreciated. Hopefully, it will, it will continue to stay civil. And, and then I guess one thing I forgot at the last Board Matters was, I think right before then, a bunch of us got to give, do a school supply drive and bring some supplies to Rosa Parks. We got a great tour there from the principal, got to meet a bunch of the teachers. And I think we've seen just a lot of great moments of community support for our schools as the school year had started off. And that's always really important for the, for the long-term success and support of our schools. And as a shout out to Dave Klein and his staff, we brought a couple of visitors there, and they were impressed and astonished by just the cleanliness and how well put together and kept up our school facilities were. So thank you to all of our teams as we were opening up the schools and all the work put in there.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Chairman Sorensen. Mr. Deutsch, that was a fun report. I'll follow up with that with some fun highlights. I had the pleasure. One of the things I most enjoy about this position is being able to go into the schools and visit classrooms, not during just events, but during a normal school day and seeing what is actually happening in our schools and sitting in classes and seeing lessons. You know, we always were told when I was getting my degree to be a principal, is that the best principals are present in the classrooms. And I think probably school board members, the best school board members, I'm a little biased, are ones who go and visit the schools and the classrooms. So a couple of things. So I did go to Forest Park, I mentioned that two weeks ago. To be fair, in my other high school, I also did an hour and a half at Potomac. I had the pleasure of sitting in Ms. Sheffield's senior class and answering questions. That was fun, kind of a Q and A session with seniors. At Potomac High School, following that, I went to Potomac Middle School, went in and specifically visited some first-year teacher classrooms just to show some support. They were like, what are you doing here? But it's all fun, you know, right? I'm not evaluating. It was fun to sit in there, be supportive. I also checked in on our aquaponics program, which is, again, you guys, people who've been tuning in and watching our show, had the pleasure of seeing Potomac Middle School present their program last year. So it's up and running. It's integrated, so really cool to see that happening. Following Potomac Middle School, went to Mary Williams. I always described that as the school with a lot of Disney magic happening. Great building. They have a new STEM room, a lot of great things going on there. Following Mary Williams, went to Montclair Elementary, visited the team there, new principal there, a lot of excitement happening there. Went back to Covington Harper and visited on a normal school day. The fun event was the ceremony, and now it's time to get to work. The teachers are doing a great job. Sat in on an art class, a STEM class, and a music class. Fun times. I capped the day at Triangle at the very end of the day, greeting teachers as they went out and started their very short weekend. So fun day. Other events, as Mr. Deutsch mentioned, there were back-to-school nights happening. I went to Potomac and Grand Parks, two separate nights. They were both great events. Last night, I had the pleasure of going to Pace East, back-to-school nights. Great program. Got to see the progress of that new building being built and being, hopefully, opening on time this year, later on this spring. I also went to Montclair Elementary again, had a family fun night. I want to thank our partners with Virginia Star and Spark. Last year, it was brought to my attention that a couple of parents had felt that Montclair Elementary gets ignored in the scheme of things. So I wanted to start facilitating a partnership with the technology and integration. We worked on it over the summer, and I want to thank Chuck Drake and Sharon Henry for helping me secure 36 additional classroom computers for Montclair Elementary School, and hopefully that partnership will continue to take off as they do more and integrate technology into the classroom. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to keep this short. I also have been going to a few back-to-school nights, but let me just preface this by saying I missed a few. For those who don't know, I have, now have a preschooler, so I now have preschool germs. So I've been trying to not pass them on to other people out of fairness, because those, I believe, are kind of the most dangerous little petri just germs on earth. So excuse me if I've missed your event. It's only because I didn't want to share that type of love with you. But I did make it to Fred Lynn, was able to tour the school and see all the excitement that's going on there. Hamish Burroughs has done a great job of changing the interior of the school. If you have not been over there, I encourage you to check it out. It is very reflective of our diverse culture and community. There are, the mural is outstanding. And then there was a mural that was being done by some Woodbridge High School students at the end of last year, and they were able to complete it, and it is a flag that has welcome in several different languages. It's a sight to behold. Just the excitement there is amazing. On September 30th, they'll be having grounds beautification. So if you're interested in coming to lend a hand, I'll be out there with my family, and I hope that you can join us in creating, further creating the culture and family spirit over there. It's now called the Hive, in case you're interested. Last night, I was able to attend Ripon's back-to-school night and meet our new principal over there, Mr. Berquist, who is amazing. The same type of excitement going on over there. Our lovely officer in the back had testified to the fact that I could not get out of the parking lot without their help. It was just amazingly packed. I don't think you could have put a car anywhere else over there. It was outstanding, and you would just never known that, it didn't feel like that in the building. It felt very comfortable, and everyone was excited to see each other, and the buzz is just outstanding, and I'm very excited. Sorry, was not able to make it across the street to Woodbridge, but I literally couldn't get out of Ripon to get across. So I apologize to that from Ms. Owens, but I will be over there. I know that you have already got a head start on creating a family environment over at Woodbridge Middle as you were there last year, and it's been successful. So I know you're keeping up a great job. To all of our middle, my middle schools, I will be seeing you. I haven't gotten there yet, but I'm getting there. And I just wanted to just give a general shout out to my Woodbridge District Schools. Your SOL scores and test scores were just amazing last year, and I just want to give credit where credit is due to our students and our staff for really working together collaboratively to get the results that I'm sure you knew were there the whole time. So thank you very much for all of your efforts. It's just been fantastic. As always this time of year, I tried my very best to give a special shout out to Freedom because I love Freedom's bistro. If you have not been over there to eat with the special education students, I'm telling you, top-notch service, better than some of the four-star restaurants that I've eaten at, and I do not say that lightly. They will give you your napkin. You know what you're getting. People are, it's fabulous. I think they're still running the bus. Are they running the bus, Mr. Mulgrew, during football season? So if you don't get a chance to go during lunch, these students actually run a bus during the football games. So I would encourage you to check it out, because I also heard, I think, I'm not a sports person, but they have like a pretty amazing football team over there with some pretty amazing football players. So that's my little athletic pitch for the year. But again, congratulations to Freedom for their scores on the academic side. Mrs. Bryant made good. She said that she was going to have all of her students have high expectations for the school community, and it definitely shows. So thank you very much. And if I haven't seen you yet in my schools, I'm coming. I've just promised not to share any germs. So thank you, and see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start by saying, welcome back. Glad to see you sitting here. Please return again. I'd like to also invite everyone, because you're cordially invited, to join us in honoring John Jenkins as we dedicate the auditorium of his favorite school, Garfield. So it will be October the 8th at 4:00 p.m. So please try to make that. And if you are a Garfield graduate and you're listening, I expect to see you on the 8th. I also want to say thank you to all of my principals. They have done a wonderful job this past season, well, school year. I think I'm talking about football or something. So I want to thank them and all their staff. That's a lot of work, and especially, in my opinion, to the little bitty people called elementary schools. So where are you? I don't see him, because I want, oh, yes, there you are. Hi, Todd. I want to thank Mr. Erickson very much for everything that he has done for us in helping us in the apps go, and we're moving ahead. And so I really appreciate it. And I couldn't leave out Mr. Bixby, since I'm going to call people out by name. And I thank you very much. And I know the work that you have set your mind on working with our middle schools. And I, I know that you will be successful in helping us. Thank you very much. And Mr. Mulgrew, thank you for all that you do over at Garfield, since that's the only high school I have, so I don't take up much of your time at all. So I appreciate it very much. We have parents who are just very, very active, and they're looking forward to anything that they can do this coming year. they can do this coming year. And that's different from other times. Even the Garfield Alumni Association is trying to get very, very busy, and we hope they will come and help work with some of our students. So, I'll leave that up to Mr. Mulgrew to get them together. So, Mr. Superintendent, it's good to see you, and I know we're going to have great fun and success this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston, and Mr. Brand.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to have some thank yous for tonight. I want to say thank you again to the Gainesville Middle School eighth-grade women's ensemble for coming to our meeting tonight. I definitely want to wish them the best of luck. They're performing at the Virginia Music Education Educators Association, it's called the V EMA for short, conference. That's coming up in November, I think about mid-November, and that's going to be at the Homestead. So, they are looking forward to that performance, they got some good practice for that tonight, and I also want to give kudos to them. They are one of only two middle schools in the state of Virginia to have that honor to perform at that conference, so I wish them the best of luck. And also, I thank you to Ms. Porter-Lucas, the excellent principal of Gainesville Middle School, for coming tonight and giving them support. So, thank you for coming. Again, thank you to administration staff, students from the Knoxville School for coming tonight to present some of their best practices. The Knoxville School was one of the first schools that I visited when I took on this acting role a year ago, and I've always enjoyed going back to the school and talking to the administration, the teachers, and the students there. So, thanks again to them. And lastly, thank you to Pastor Stan Rata of New Life Christian Church, Linton Hall Campus. They meet at Piney Branch Elementary School, and I want to thank them for coming to do the invocation tonight. That church has been a great addition to our Cardinal community, they've been very helpful, very giving, and they do a lot of great activities and help out with our PTO, so thanks again to Pastor Rata for coming tonight. Do you have another update on Mr. Trinum? He actually starts the process of coming home tomorrow. He plans to be back in Prince William County the second week in October after some detours in Germany, Norfolk, and the DC area to finish up his US Naval Reserve's duty, and he will be back here, up here on the dais on October 18th. And I know many of us, we look forward to seeing him back in his elected position and doing the great things for the students he does in the Brentsville District and throughout Prince William County schools. It was great to visit Stonewall Jackson High School and Patriot High School on Thursday, September 7th. I did double duty that night for their back-to-school nights. Definitely, it was an enjoyment to see the administration, the teachers, the parents, the students. And I definitely want to give kudos to Dr. Nichols and Dr. Bishop for the great jobs they're doing at their respective schools. I look forward to attending some more back-to-school nights next week. All the elementary schools are starting to pop up, as we know, and there'll be quite a few of those in the Brentsville District. I'll try to get to as many as I can, I promise, I will tell you, I'm not going to get to them all, there's a lot of conflicts. And I will be going to my own Piney Branch Elementary on, I think, Tuesday night with my parent hat on. Ms. Williams, Ms. Jessie, and I attended the first joint CIP process team meeting of the school year. That was very early, last Saturday morning, 7:30. And of course, Mr. Trinum, he looks into coming back for the October 1, which will be at nighttime, which could be good or bad, I guess it kind of depends on your drive and traffic. But personally, I am glad that I definitely got an opportunity to be part of that team. We have had many fruitful discussions. I've enjoyed working with my fellow school board members and the members of the Board of Supervisors who have been part of it. And I definitely look forward to what that board is going to present to their respective boards, which I think will be at their, I'm not positive, but I think it's going to be at their joint board meeting in November, on November 28th. See, I have all the dates on my head, I'm not even going to be here, but on November 28th, that's when they're going to do the presentation. One year ago, on Friday, I took the oath of office from the clerk of the Prince William Court, the late Michelle McQuig, to serve as the acting member of the Brentsville District. It's been quite a year, and I will reflect and share some thoughts on this experience during Board Matters at the next meeting. In closing, I would like to wish everybody a great start to fall. It does not feel like fall this week, but it will be fall, I think, on Friday, and I look forward to seeing you at my final board meeting in this acting role on Wednesday, October 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I also want to thank the Gainesville Middle School Women's Ensemble. My first PG movie in the theater, yes, I'm dating myself, was Grease, and I had the album and loved the song "We Go Together," and the first song was also absolutely beautiful. So, that was really a nice way to start our meeting tonight. I have also been, as everybody else, have been very busy with back-to-school nights. I was able to attend Battlefield High School's afternoon session, their first one, the second one, we had the Governor's School Meeting, Governor's School Board Meeting that night, so I got there at the very end to say goodbye to a few people as they left. So, that's why I wasn't as visible in that second one. But I was able to attend back-to-school nights at Ronald Reagan Middle School, Bull Run Middle School, and Stonewall Middle School. And at each one, as Mr. Wilk said, I try to get into the classrooms also. I try to go in and meet new teachers, I try to see people that I've met before. It gives me a great idea of what's going on in the different grade levels in our classrooms and what they're studying for the year, and I love hearing that. I want to give a special shout out to Stonewall Middle School. The night that I went, they had all of their back-to-school nights from 6th through 8th in the same night, and there was so much enthusiasm with their staff, everybody was excited, everyone's looking forward to this year. There was also a great turnout by parents, and they brought students along. It was really good to see so many people I knew in the community also. So, I want to give a shout out to that staff for their excitement. I'm really looking forward to seeing good things happening at Stonewall Middle School this year. And also, I had the pleasure of attending the 21st Annual Northern Virginia Community College Education Foundation Dinner. Want to thank Ms. Lawson for the invitation and Dr. Lynch for hosting us. It was really also great to catch up with Dr. Hill at that event. Northern Virginia Community College now has over 75,000 students, making it one of the largest colleges in the country. And one of the stats that Dr. Lynch sent to Ms. Lawson and I, this is from a couple of years ago, but approximately 30% of our graduating seniors from Prince William County schools go on to attend Northern Virginia Community College. It was a very interesting statistic to see, and it was pretty consistent, 28 to 30, just over 30% of every school in the county. I'm looking forward to seeing what we continue to do as we work with Northern Virginia Community College, and looking forward to having a tour of the Manassas campus within the next few months. Coming up this Monday night, and Monday during the day at Battlefield High School, there'll be the Rachel's Challenge Presentations, and in the evening at 7:00 p.m., there is a presentation for parents and community members. And as Battlefield High School says, "We're excited for you to join us in welcoming this new step toward a stronger, more positive culture at Battlefield High School." I know some parents have expressed concern that it's the same night as the Osborne Park High School College Fair. I just want to point out that we do have a second college fair in the county in October, so if parents choose to go to the Rachel's Challenge Event on Monday night at 7 o'clock at Battlefield, there is another opportunity to go to the college fair in our county with our students later on in October. And so, I just want to say that isn't available for an option. And I look forward to attending the Rachel's Challenge Event on Monday, as well as back-to-school nights on Monday, I'll be doing some multitasking. And as other board members said, there are a lot of elementary schools to get to, I'm not going to be able to get to all of them, but I will try and visit as many as I can. I think I have about two each night scheduled for next week, and I look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We have to go into, we have another motion to finish up some closed session business, so we need to get that moving along. That will end the public session part of the meeting. We just have a few things that we have to tidy up before we go on. Right, but there'll be no more public agenda, is what I'm saying. This is just going to be closed session, so there'll be nothing, there's nothing additional on the public agenda, is what I'm trying to say. Yes, we have to come back out and vote, but there'll be nothing else on the public agenda, no different than when we come in at other times and just do closed session stuff, just making that point. So, the public meeting will now, is now completed, the board does have a few closed session things to complete, so we'll need a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Satterwhite.
I move that we go back to closed session.
We have to read the whole thing.
Yeah, it's up there.
It's 1801.
No, that's Board Matters. 20 at 201 with us.
That's the closed session certification.
Why is mine up? You, yeah, it's not on ours. Ours is different.
Hit F5, please. It's on my screen, I hit F5.
There we go.
Microphone, please, I'm sorry, Ms. Satterwhite.
Sorry, turned off. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to continue the evaluation of Division Council and consider related amendment to our contract of employment under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A and A1. And two, to discuss and take action relating to the censure of Board Chairman under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
Thank you. Give me a second. Ms. Williams? Discussion? Discussion? Nope. Online voting is open?
Jessie, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now go into closed session.
Gentlemen, the Prince William County School Board has now returned to open session from closed session. Just a little disclosure, I am filling in per request of my fellow board members because we do not have our chair or vice chair at this moment, so. Okay, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
We're on 1901. Mr. Deutsch?
Hang on, oh, no, it is, sorry. Ms. Chairman, I move that Prince William County School Board, based upon the performance of Division Council, authorize School Board Members Allison Satterwhite and Lori Williams to execute an amendment to Section 4 of Division Council's Employment Contract.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Captain Chairman.
Ms. Ralston?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Or this is no discussion? Correct. Oh, okay, just want to make sure I got my facts right. All right. Okay, is there anything I, Justin, go ahead. I just want to mention during discussion that I am recusing myself of this, and I will vote to abstain. That will be my recusing of this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk.
The vote is five yes, two absent, Sawyers and Jessie, one abstention. Mr. Wilk, motion passed.
It's actually this one.
Okay, so moving on. Okay, we're moving on to our next item on our closed session agenda, the censure of Chairman-at-Large Ryan Sawyers. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie Satterwhite.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the resolution censuring Chairman-at-Large Ryan Sawyers for multiple and egregious violations of the Prince William County School Board Code of Ethics.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Got it. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Discussion?
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to note it for the record that I am going to vote no on this, not because I am in a disagreement with the Prince William County School Board violation of ethics, I think we are all guilty of that, but because I do not agree with censuring one board member for violations of School Board, Prince William County School Board Code of Ethics. I believe that this has been an occurrence that has been commonplace on this board, especially with closed session information being released to the public. And I feel at this time that if we are going to censure one, that we should take a hard look at all of ourselves and not be so divisive. It's not an agreeance of Mr. Sawyer's actions, nor do I speak for him, but I think if you're going to do one, it should be justifiable and do everyone who has done the same. So, to me, this is more of politics at play, instead of doing what we're supposed to be doing, which is working collaboratively together as a board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other discussion? Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'm sorry, Mr. Brand. I'm sorry, Mr. Brand. This is confusing tonight. I just want to say, disagree with Ms. Williams, I didn't want to have a lot of discussion out here with the board. I think the motion speaks for itself in light of some actions that have happened recently. As I commented, these were multiple and egregious violations, and I felt like it was in the best interest to protect the integrity and professionalism of this board that this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Mr. Deutsch?
I just want to note for the record that we did give an opportunity for the board member mentioned to be present.
Any other discussion before we vote?
The vote is four yes, two no. Wilk and Williams, motion passed.
I just have a quick question, I'm sorry.
Ms. Satterwhite, I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Williams, we're all giving the wrong names tonight.
We're just going to go hey you from now on, hey you to the last.
Sorry.
I'm just curious, Debbie, I just wanted to ask a question. I know that when we just took this vote, normally, we record who's present and who's not present at the vote, and I noticed that that was not mentioned. It's in the records, right?
Oh, it'll be in the record.
Okay, because, no, it's okay. The way our technology's been going, I just thought I'd check.
It's a little bit, but we're still, we're all timed.
Thank you. No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, and the last item on our closed session agenda is the closed session certification. Do you have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Deutsch?
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board Meeting of September 20th, 2017, be certified by adopting the following resolution, now therefore be resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements were discussed in a closed meeting to which certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as are identified in the motion convening closed session meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is that good?
The vote is five yes, one no. Wilk, two absent, Sawyers and Jessie, motion passed.
With there be no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned.